February twenty-three, we're mounting the city council, call to order. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. First of all, welcome Scott, Stephanie. Thank you for engaging wherever you're at. Agenda approval. Is there a motion to move forward with that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving to second to move forward with the agenda. Prove it, I'll prepare that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In the last minute, I was addressed an item that needed to be on the agenda, because it did not make to be posted agenda. And I asked the speaker to make it in the public comment section of the meeting here, and see where we need to go from there. So I'm going to ask who's that to talk about?
Great, thank you for doing that. So I need to file a report with the state at the end of the month.
You can push the button.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make it, and it'll go green.
Does that start me?
There you go.
Thank you. So I need to get this report into the state by the end of the month, and I have to have given a report to city council before that. So I'm hoping it's okay for me to do this at the open comment.
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's appropriate.
That's alternative here at this point, yep.
That's great. So I'm Sue Astley, and I live in the Atten Park Historic District. And I'm here representing the Mount Vernon Historic Preservation Commission. I have here in my notes that there's a written report in the council packet. I assume that that will be in maybe at the next meeting, so you'll be able to see the full written report. So I'm going to just give some highlights here, rather than trying to repeat the whole report. So we have a series of annual tasks we do every year. One of those was a set of design reviews, we did thirteen this year. Those are done when there's exterior work done on a house in the historic district. This is, this number of reviews is less than we had during the COVID years. During the COVID years, we meet every two weeks, we have two or three items on our agenda. Now we more likely have one, and sometimes we don't have to meet at mid-month. We have several projects that are aimed at public education. We do a spring and fall newsletter, and we mailed out a brochure entitled Owning Property in a Historic District. And all those things went to every address in the historic districts. We now mail the latter brochure about owning a property to new owners in the historic districts. We've tried for probably twenty years to get that brochure to new owners. And we're finally checking the auditor's website every month, just to look for new house sales in the historic districts. And the brochure now goes out to new homeowners. So they have a whole lot of ways that they can know that they're in a historic district. We also did two public workshops. We do a webpage and we do Facebook posts. We've been slower, we've been really busy this year, so we've been slower with the webpage and the Facebook posts than we would like to be. We're hoping next year we can catch up on that. So as I said, all of our projects are described in our written report, which you'll get at some point. I want to highlight three and give a little bit of backstory about those items. So the first one started in the way lots of things start in Mount Vernon. One person was walking her dog, another person was doing her daily walk. The two people here were Mary Evans and Amy White. Mary had been looking for some kind of a project for Mount Vernon's one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary. And I will try to put the name of this, it's the Demi Semi Centennial, that's one-hundred-and-seventy-five years. I practiced my Latin for a long time to do that. The Play Treasure, Amy wanted to recruit her colleague Joe Dennison for this project. He agreed to write it with her. The Play Treasure was written and staged, done a stage reading in two thousand and twenty-two. And then this last year, two thousand and twenty-three, we were able to work with the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Theater to do a full production of the play. They agreed to put on their regular schedule, Amy directed the play. It was really a triumph, it's really one of the high points of my time on the Historic Preservation Commission. And Amy agreed to donate her annotated script to our archive, so we will always have that play in the archive with her handwritten notes in it. So that was a really great gift to have in our archive. The Visitor Center has been a special project of ours for at least the last four years. And it started when Preser, when Main Street Iowa asked for three changes in the Visitor Center. They came, they said, you need to preserve it better, and we need you to do these three things. Before we started on any of those, however, we wanted to do an overall assessment. So we didn't want to start on this piecemeal without knowing what the whole picture looked like. So we were able to hire, so we got some funding from the National Trust for Historic Places. A match was provided by the City of Mount Vernon. And in two thousand and twenty, we created a preservation plan. And it included the three things that were on the agenda of Main Street Iowa, and also a whole series of other things. So we got a really pretty complete picture of the Visitor Center and what its needs were. And then we accomplished one of the things on, on Main Street Iowa's list, which was a restoration of the front window in two thousand and twenty-one. That money came from the Lynn County Historic Preservation Commission, and also was matched again by the City of Mount Vernon. So the city have been generous in both of those projects. We knew to be eligible for any larger grant programs, the structure needed to be on the National Register of Historic Places. It was not. It was moved from the Mount Vernon Bank location to Park in nineteen ninety, after the historic district was founded. So it was not on the National Register, and we felt it was really important to do that. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we used our annual allocation from the city to hire a professional to do nomination papers to get the Visitor Center on the National Register. So that was our project in two thousand and twenty-two. This year, this past year, two thousand and twenty-three, it doesn't seem like it's quite over yet. I know it's almost March, but it still seems like two thousand and twenty-three. We were able to obtain eleven thousand dollars through Iowa's Historic Resource Development Program. And that's one of those programs that has to be on the National Register, or you're not eligible to apply for those funds. So it's a relatively small grant, but it's bigger than the five thousand or, or less grants that we've gotten after that. This project will cover the cleaning of the masonry, re-tuck pointing. And that structure has a special pencil tuck pointing that's for that historical period, but it was built in nineteen twelve. And that pencil tuck pointing was originally on the building. And they will, we hired a local firm that's an expert in this. They'll analyze the mortar to make sure it works, and they're, they were approved for that by the state. So the state have approved them to do that. And again, this is a case in which matching funds were provided by the City of Mount Vernon. And then also some will come from our annual allocation, sixteen thousand or sixteen hundred will come from our annual allocation from the city. That work will be completed this spring. So that's a project for two thousand and twenty-four, though we obtained the money in two thousand and twenty-three. The other project relates to demolition. Not a happy topic. In two thousand and seventeen, Cornell tore down two Civil War-era houses with very little notice and no contact with the HPC. I was not on the HPC at that time, people were livid about it. They built a wonderful science center on the ground, but this created a huge uproar in Mount Vernon. In two thousand and nineteen, the city council enacted a demolition ordinance that was created by Commissioner Guy Booth and City Administrator Chris Masbisch. This demolition ordinance has a fourteen-day waiting period. So when a demolition permit is applied for, that fourteen-day waiting period starts. The Historic Preservation Commission does an assessment of the property. Is it historic? Are there alternatives that could be done? And would it be damaging to Mount Vernon if this property were torn down? The possible alternatives are, some of them are outlined in the ordinance, things like rehabbing the structure, finding a new owner for it who's more interested in retaining it, moving it, and as a last resort, salvaging some of the elements of the structure. If the structure has to come down, let's say it's eaten up by termites or something. If it has to come down, how much of it can be saved and reused? But when two thousand and twenty-three started, there were actually two things on that ordinance that still needed to be done. The ordinance applies to all structures in the historic district. So any house that's in the historic district is automatically subject to this review. But it also says that structures that are on a local list of historic structures will also be subject to that review. So it really covered all of Mount Vernon, but just historic, identified historic structures. There was no such list in two thousand and twenty-three. So if there was a proposed demolition, we'd have to start from scratch on that. What we did was, we went to the county auditor's site. We looked at structures, houses that were built before nineteen forty. Then we looked at their architecture, so there's a picture on the auditor's site of each house in Mount Vernon. We looked at it to see if it had significant architectural features. And had it been sufficiently modified that it was no longer historic? There's one really remarkable building that was covered with spray foam at some point, and is no longer historical. We now have a list of two thousand, two hundred and nine houses that are on the Mount Vernon Iowa Inventory of Historic Buildings. And we also need an application. So we have an application for statutory appropriateness for, for interpretation of a building, but we didn't have one for demolition. So we created an application for demolition, and we use that in the HPC. We used this process. Jordan Smith's house, as you know, basically burned down to the, to the foundation. And Jordan came to us early in two thousand and twenty-three to get permission to demolish his house. And so we, we were able to do that. So that's my brief report, and you'll get the full written report at some point. I want to thank you for listening, and for the city's many years of generous financial support to Mount Vernon's Historic Preservation Commission. Don't know if you have any questions, or if it's appropriate at this point to take more time.
Any questions, Stephanie Scott? Thank you for your report, and are you getting all your requirements met for this end of the month deadline with this report?
Yes, so I'll have to get a signature from me that I've given this report, and I'll arrange that at some point.
If you leave it at City Hall, I'll catch those like midday tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Perfect, I'll print it out and bring it, thanks.
You're Sue.
Oh, did you have a question? I thought you had a question.
I was just telling Sue, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Any other public comments this time? Otherwise, we move to consent agenda. Got a couple items in there. Anything we need to pull off of that, or are we ready to move forward with consent agenda? Motion to that back? Motion to move. And Mark, is there a second?
Now that I'm off you, I will second.
Please, Stephanie. I can read your lips first. Let's move to second to move forward with consent agenda. All prepare the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pointing at a public hearing, this first one is a consent amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I'll officially open the public hearing. Is anybody here to speak to that? Agenda item at this time. Chris, anything to add? Any comments to the city officers?
Now, as I put in the report, projected increase of two-point-five million dollars, but it's all about how the dollars come in. So we only expect to borrowing that will happen before June, and there are some expenses that will likely come with those projects before the end of this fiscal year, when we need to account for them.
Lost my screen here, but is there anybody here to speak to that public hearing? About amendments, fiscal year budget? Not, do the motion officially close the public hearing, then we'll go to roll call vote. No motion needed. Okay, officially close the public hearing. And then we will go to G one, which is resolution to approve fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion to that back?
I'll move to approve Resolution two, twenty, twenty-four A.
Thank you, Mark, is there a second? On G one?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Moving second to move forward with Resolution two-dash-twenty-dash-twenty-two-four A. And that is a roll call vote, so I will turn it over to Marshall.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yeah.
Motion passes. And me too, public hearing, consider amendments with comprehensive plan. Officially open that public meeting. And is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak towards that, or any to add from staff? Hearing done. We'll close that public hearing. Comprehensive plan adjustment, and move to item F one, which is ordinance twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two-four A. When the comprehensive plan official zoning map to rezone certain property from traditional residential to mixed-use urban corridor. And what's on the table here is a motion to approve the first reading. A motion to approve, okay. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Stephanie, there's a motion. Moving second to move forward with the first reading on two-twenty, twenty-four A.
So just to, to confirm, this is the, this is regarding the fire station moving from the traditional residential, so they can put up signage more appropriate to a fire station?
Yeah, it has a public purpose overlay. We did that about, I want to say, a year or two ago. But it's still subject to its base zoning, which right now is traditional residential. And urban corridor actually comes up to that lot order. So it just makes sense to move urban corridor one lot and allow them kind of a higher use from setbacks and certain items like that.
That's where initiated the process was the signage of a fire station, you're right, Scott.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments about that resolution? Are we ready to vote on that? Free, sorry, we're moving second, right? Okay, free to vote on that.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
That ordinance passes. Moving on to G two, setting salaries for the appointed officers and employees in City of Mount Vernon fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We had a report last meeting about where this process was heading, and we got contracts. What was in our, what got set out was not correct, right? But these are correct.
So contracts are just a little bit further down. These are for all, this resolution covers all non-union employees, not covered by a contract. Everybody would receive a five percent across-the-board increase, with the exception of my salary, which was discussed last year. And then Jacob, Jacob Buster, they made some changes to at the fire department on their officer, so they have two assistant chiefs at this point, so they're putting them on a level playing field. And Jacob, if you remember, actually took over the, the EMA for the city. So those are the only two that are, that deviate from, from that five percent. But we're trying to get those assistant chiefs more in line with the chief too, and more in line with what they do. So they'll have a little bit higher bump next year as well. But they're, again, treated a little bit different than the rest of the non-union employees.
The city manager adjustment was based upon the survey or documentation research that Catherine Rose did last year, about sixteen months ago or so, and tried to get aligned that salary with couples, communities, and so on. And we decided at that time, Mark's living with that decision right now, but to do it in a two-phase adjustment. First phase was done last year, and this is the second phase of that. And so that's the reasoning for that higher percent, with the eight grand there. So that's the explanation on that. Anything to add? I mean, thank you, Catherine Scott, Rose for doing the work there. So.
So I have a question, Tom?
Sure.
Is this resolution specifically about the setting of salaries? Because in the packet, there were some edits made to things like, I think, to the big chunk of information on the health insurance. This is specifically about the salaries, correct?
Correct, this is just non-union salaries. And what they would be subject to July one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Any other questions? We making motion, Steph?
Yep, I was just gonna say, having heard that, I will move to pass Resolution two-dash-twenty-dash-twenty-two-four B to set salaries for the non-bargaining staff.
Thank you, Stephanie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Let's move to second to move on with two-twenty, twenty-two-four B. There is no further discussion. I think we need to go to voice, I'll, I'll vote.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to twenty-two-four C, setting dates for a consultation public hearing on proposing amendment number nine to Mount Vernon renewal plan in the City of Mount Vernon, State of Iowa. Questions?
This is to include the full renovation project into the urban renewal area, specifically to give the city council the ability to spend up to two million dollars in tip monies to cover cost of that renovation.
And the date that's selected is March eighteenth at our next, our second next council meeting?
Yep.
And, and just, I'm sure if we consider, just so we ask, I know that we were moving, oh, no, we were moving quickly on the bond issues.
Correct.
Not necessarily moving quickly on this, okay. I, I got them wrapped up with the money for that.
They're all interconnected, honestly.
Yeah, yeah.
But this, this process is pretty established, so. The, the goal is to get those bond dollars here before the end of this fiscal year.
Right. With that, I would move to move to Resolution two-dash-twenty-dash-twenty-two-four C, setting a public hearing for the amendment to a model.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
And Mark? Second to set that public hearing date. And if there's no further discussion or further explanation from staff, we're ready to call the vote, so.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. No mayoral proclamations this month, old business, approval liquor license. And I think we want to keep that table, it's worth the last night.
Correct.
Okay, so no action needs to be taken at this time.
So you just need a motion for that, Tom?
Nope, you just need a motion to take it off the table, and the staff is recommending that you leave it there.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good question, though. Moving to motions for approval, approval claims list. Marshall said I was a new one this afternoon, if you had a chance to take a look at that. Are we ready to approve that claims list at this time?
I would make a motion to approve the claims list as presented.
Thank you, Stephanie, is there a second?
Second.
And Mark? Moving seconded to approve the version two of the claims list presented this afternoon. All prepare that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Session consideration of setting a public hell, public hearing date and meeting time for proposed property tax levy for the City of Mount Vernon. Council action is needed. You want to explain a little bit about the process too while you're at this topic?
So this is a brand-new, this year with the property tax changes, we have to have a standalone hearing on the proposed levy rate and budget this year. So you'll be setting a date for April one, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P M., which will be a half hour before your regularly scheduled meeting. The other item that will change is, is the auditor's office will send out a letter notification on all proposed changes to every individual in Lynn County, so they're aware of what the budget is going to do for this fiscal year. And they have made the, the extension of the certification date in April permanent versus used to have to be done by March fifteenth of every fiscal year. So with that, that's really about it. We will run through the same information at that budget hearing, and it'll just be a standalone meeting.
Different process, and there'll be a break after half an hour. And you'll move on to agenda. So what you're doing now is setting the public hearing date for the table first, is what you're looking for.
Correct.
Is there a motion for that back?
One, one quick question. Chris, I just want to clarify, are they going to send out our property tax information to everybody in Lynn County?
So it's specific to each community, and this is.
Okay, alright.
This is the proposed nightmare that I think is going to happen is everybody will get an individualized letter, depending on where you're at.
Yep. So with that impending disaster, I would move up to seven. I'm still reading a standalone council meeting for Monday, April first, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P M. Did he propose a property tax levy for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five?
Thank you, Scott, a lot of motion and your optimism there, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Scott. Moving second to set the April first public hearing date, and first time through this process, going through this proposed property tax levy. And that is a voice vote, and if we're ready to vote on that one, all prepare that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Getting into contracts here, discussion consideration of master agreement for law enforcement units with shareholders, teamsters, and local union Tuesday eight.
So I did send out new contracts and handed out copies of the new contracts, with probably the right dates in it. It also has the new table updated. This is a three-year contract. July one of this year will be a five percent increase. July one of twenty-five will be a four and a half percent increase. And July one of twenty-six would be a four percent increase. On the PD side of things, under longevity, we, we added an oversight, which was, we did not count the years of service that two of the officers had in Lisbon towards that longevity. So we added that to, to make a point so they can get those years. Basically, we approved what was discussed with council. I'm happy it's a three-year contract. So we don't have to go back to the issue table anytime soon. The only other thing is, effective immediately, or as soon as these contracts are, are approved, that two-thousand-dollar step increase to one, two, and three would go into effect this year. It's about a ninety-six cent increase for those. And again, those are for, if we have an opening, they're not leaving the academy and getting a different job right off the bat. And we do have one officer right now that falls in one of those categories. So we want to make sure that we're able to maintain them. So that goes into effect immediately, and then they'll get their five percent bump again in July one.
Chris, this is where I saw all of the insurance information struck.
So in the public services contract, in the next one, changes to collective bargaining made it illegal for cities and unions to negotiate insurance information, so that's why it had to be removed from the contract.
That's right, I'd forgotten that, thank you.
But just for the literal public record, we are still providing insurance for all of the employees with that nineteen percent.
Yes, police and fire are still allowed to bargain for, for insurance. And in order to be consistent, we're keeping that the same across the board for all employees. We're just no longer allowed to even discuss it at the bargaining table or anything, for any bargaining unit outside of police and fire. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your.
Thanks.
And I do want to point out for the public and everybody listening, the reason we did not push the nineteen for civil. we did not push the 19% so that employees pay 19% of their premium, we did not push for an increase because we joined IDHCP and our premium increases this year were 3.25%. So they have a 19-year history of keeping their premium increase below 5%.
And just for comparison, if I remember correctly, in the last meeting you mentioned that they had told you that with, had we not been in that organization.
Blue Cross Blue Shield told me that we would have been north of 15, more like north of 18% had we been on our own, though.
So yeah, that speaking of that 19, managing it to the 3.5 is based on the history that we've had with health insurance increases from how long?
Decent.
Scott, could you maybe turn up your volume a little bit if you can?
Sure, sorry about that. I've got my earbuds in, so I can speak up a little bit, but that's better.
I don't have a problem. Maybe, do what you can.
He's not in our system right now for some reason.
Well, I thought this was harder, okay. So this is the first of two contracts we're looking at. This is, the first one is law enforcement staff and as Chris pointed out, big to have the, the three years and by four and a half and four is what we talked about last month or last meeting, so no big surprises there. And some internal things that also belong with this, but is there a motion to move forward with this present, current agreement, law enforcement?
Yes, I will make the motion to move forward with the master agreement for law enforcement with the Schferz, Teamsters, and Helpers Local Union Number 238.
Is there a second? I give that one to Mark.
I'll second.
So Stephanie, Mark on that one.
No.
It's moving seconded to move forward with the master agreement for law enforcement group. And if you hear no further clarification or questions, all pay for that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Same process in the next one for Public Works. Anything to add there, Chris?
No, I think the biggest change obviously was the removal of the language on insurance.
Which has already been addressed, yeah.
So with that, I would move approval of the master agreement for public services unit with Schferz, Teamsters, and Helpers Local Union 238.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving seconded to move forward with the master agreement for Public Works. Any final questions or comments? Are you voting on that? All pay for motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and probably pass on to both units. First of all, thanks for the collaborative spirit with which negotiations happen and thanks for your service, pass, and upcoming in your respective divisions, law enforcement and Public Works. Discussion consideration change order number 14. Boy, did see that coming, the chief.
So both of these change orders, 14 and 15, increased the contract by $3,852.45. Change order 14 is in the amount of $2,262.45. That is for electric work. This is the smallest portion of this project, but also came with some of the most unknowns as they get up in the attic and, and the electric work that they found obviously did not meet codes, so they had to make some changes in order to satisfy code requirements. So that's what this change order is. I'm just gonna go ahead on, on change order 15, the additional skin coating was a, a staff request because we had this beautiful renovation on both sides and in between, we had two corridors that needed some work, so we've, we've already approved new ceiling tile in both of those corridors and then the skin coating will happen and, and we may paint that ourselves, we may put it in the contract if the painter comes, but just want to make sure that when the, when the building is done, it doesn't look like 90% of it's renovated and 10% is not.
We're this close. Let's get it done. Approval for change order number 14. Is there a motion to that effect? I'll move to approve change order 14. Mark, and I thought I heard Stephanie.
Yes, I'll have a second.
Okay. Moving seconded to move forward on change order number 14. Is there no other discussion? All pay for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Change order 15, it's already been explained as well. Gets us closer to the.
Approval of 15.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Mark here. Moving seconded to move forward to change order 15. These are the last ones.
I can't guarantee that.
Guaranteed very much. It's the last one we're gonna approve tonight, though. Change order number 15, moving seconded to move forward with that. All pay for that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Police vehicle purchase. Got some good news.
Well, the going lead time for police vehicles has been what?
August the 22nd is when I ordered this one.
So as opposed, we did have to get a new police vehicle this year for the one that was damaged by the deer hit, so it's a little unusual that we're getting two this year, but this was the programmed replacement Ford Explorer. We could have taken our name out of the hat this year and gone ahead and put it in for the next fiscal year, but knowing that, that, that's like going to the casino, we, we said we just gotta keep this one, so we may have to, to make some adjustments in the budget to account for two vehicle purchases, but best to probably take while it's available.
Are you looking for a motion here?
So that's what Doug and I kind of went back and forth on. You technically approved this back in 22, but I just wanted to reaffirm and give you an opportunity to make any comments if you needed to, but you have already approved the purchase.
I'm taking this discussion consideration.
In my opinion, beans as, you know, there are no surprises here. I'm glad you just see that it finally.
They did honor the, the price that they gave us before.
They gave us the same price. It was a, the, the one we ordered was a hybrid. This one is not. It'll be an EcoBoost engine. And the only additional change to this was ironically Ford is now offering an extended service plan for law enforcement vehicles of about $2,000, so that was an additional expense that wasn't originally on there, but takes the warranty portion up to 75,000 miles, which is probably a no-brainer for squad cars.
And Doug, I think if I remember right, you had already told us about the change from the hybrid to the EcoBoost.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Thanks for researching and trying to go that direction, but you gotta make a decision then.
Whatever we can get right now, yeah.
So is, is our, is our replacement on an annual or a biannual basis?
Generally, we're on an annual basis because we have, technically, we have, I gotta think now, six vehicles, but one of them is a canine vehicle, so that one obviously, and my vehicle generally lasts longer from that portion. This is one that we would be, planned to replace now because we had the deer hit, we got the Durango to replace that one, which is in the upfitting right now. So the vehicle that we're gonna be obtaining from Lynch that we ordered before would be the replacement for the vehicle starting this next budget cycle. So we'll continue to, like I said, we're, we're, we won't be in a big hurry to get this one outfitted right away. We'll continue to drive the other one until we have extended, you know, expired the life on that. And then obviously the upfitting for that will be in next budget year cycle, so we'll be in good shape.
Sure. And what it's saying, getting at is, is would it be worth putting an order in now, but it sounds like having these two come in at the same time gives us some breathing room.
I think we're okay for right now, and I, I talked to Chris too. With the mileage on the other vehicles, we may even be able to skip one year to kind of recoup some of this as well.
Sure, okay.
The boot to the, the SUV allowed us to go to a, a five-year cycle versus a three-year cycle.
Well, if we need a motion, I would so move the Explorer purchase for the $50,036.20.
She made the motion, we'll take it as an action then. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steph. Need more reinforcement on this? So put it to a vote. All pay for the motion to move forward with this vehicle purchase, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the pool renovation, redesign and architectural firm, architectural design work with Waters Edge.
So the design aspect of, of this contract's 210,000. The overall project estimate is 1,735,000. I explained to Tom that typically we try to keep that engineering firm in the 10% to 12%, this was a little higher than that, but we don't typically try to renovate something that was built in 1950, what?
62.
62. So we're fully expecting change orders to occur as soon as they open the concrete. So I, I'm not surprised by the way this might be because I do think they're going to have to do some additional work on this project, or at least we're expecting that anyway.
It's only 12.1%.
Yeah, it's, it's really, you like to be somewhere in between, but 12% is not unheard of.
Okay.
And I, I mean, in, in my mind, the fact is that I was really, and I've said it before, I was really impressed with their work on the front end, so the fact that I'm fully confident that for this 210, we're gonna get exactly what we need to shepherd, Chris, to your point, what will inevitably be a mess the moment we start digging a hole, it seems well worth it to me.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Unless there's other questions, I would go forward, a motion to move forward would be 210 for the design fees for Waters Edge.
The motion from Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mark. As Chris pointed out to me from the earlier conversations, there's also the fact that we were kind of pushing them time-wise after the end of this season, this swimming season, so basically September 1, I'm trying to get that into construction season yet this fall, so reference and pressure on them there, so. Seconded to move forward with the design agreement with Waters Edge. And if we're ready to vote for that, all pay for motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we had a doctoral dissertation from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan here. I'm not sure you missed anything there, did you guys? Fairly thorough. I was gonna represent us as a person who I cared to speak to that and Mr. Panaman, if you'd like, what even is yours?
Bob?
Say in general.
No, I, I will just state that we spent quite a bit of time on this, almost a year. There's been some turnover at the Park and Rec Board level, so there've been a lot of changes with new people coming in. We wanted to get fresh perspective, so, but I tried to highlight as much as I could. There probably isn't everything highlighted in here in red that we changed, but the majority of it is highlighted and read in your document. Bob?
We, we have a fairly active Parks and Rec Commission, Greg Payton, Michael James, Emily Reddy, Shankram, Carl, and myself. And this indeed has been a fluid operation in the sense that we had a turnover very thoroughly to the board members, has specifically taken a part or two under their wing to look at it, and, and Matt has been exemplary in keeping the document moving for us. Our hope is when spring arrives, when things are more green and blooming, we're gonna photograph and give an illustrated report as well as the words that you see here. We realize that the Park and Rec Commission is responsible for, in a way, the face of Mount Vernon, what the city looks like as is the historic commission, so we're trying to really pay attention to not only the function of just games and so forth like that, but what the looks are and everything that we have. Specifically, a change that happened in the parks this year was the introduction of the sculpture trail along the pathway east of Towne, where you have Reese from York's Council is here. We are sitting on, are you speaking to this tonight?
No.
Okay.
I, I'm, no.
Okay, well, but being part of the committee, we're two of the people there, we've received nine exemplary proposals for new sculptures to add to the trail, so we're very excited about that possibility and how this is changing the face of Mount Vernon. If you saw the, the Gazette's article from last fall, it was a very beautiful article and the sun has covered the sculpture trail, so that's one tiny piece of the work we're doing at Parks and Rec. So we're, we have other projects before us besides the master plan. We're looking, trying to work on the marketing plan and we have a pollinator interest to help bring natural floor back in some places, so we, we have a lot of things going on in Parks and Rec, so.
I know, this question for you, if agree, but where's the next designated area for sculpture?
Right at this point, it appears we're gonna continue along that path between First Street towards the parking lot, the dog park. That's, that has many years of, of possibilities and then, then we'll see how the city goes after that, you know? We have, we have many choices.
I don't know if you have different locations or going north, you know, past the gazebo or whatever, but you're gonna find this goes south to Nature Park.
Right, right, at this moment, yeah. So, or any, anything else matter?
Are there any, are there any specific questions anybody has in regards to the document? Stephanie?
Guys, yeah, first of all, you guys, I know there's a lot there and thank you so much for your work. Your advice and your help is so important to us because we can't see it all. I do want to note that when I was looking through the document, I felt like there were some updates that maybe were missed from the prior document. One of them was talking about facility availability and the limitations of facility and, you know, now there, it, the, the Wellness Center is listed in there, but given that and also the relationship of the MV, with the MV schools, I'm not sure if that's still as much of an issue, so I would just encourage you guys to make sure you take a look at that. I had a question about, I think most of the surveys referenced in there were older from like 2010, and I feel like there's been more recent ones, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, we haven't done a full survey since 2010, but we have talked about bringing back one to get some more data and make it more modern, more up to date.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And then I guess the other thing was, you've definitely got areas in red there on each of the individual park improvements, and I think it would be great if, you know, for example, Davis Park, some of those things we've started to, you know, move forward on, and if, if on those items, if you guys just could indicate that. One of the items I saw too on Elliott Park, didn't we fix the roof on the pavilion?
No.
Maybe we just talked about it, because we talked about the material.
We have the, we have the material.
You do have the material?
Eldon says we have the material.
We have the material to do it, we just ran out of time last year, so we never got to it.
Okay, okay, good, because I felt like, I'm pretty sure I approved that, okay. Also, lighting in Major Park, you know, I just feel like, you know, we, we're totally in support of you guys. I just want to make sure that the things that are in progress are indicated on there. That's all.
Thank you.
So thanks again.
Were you gonna say something, Marie?
I just have a question. Does the city own the property between the Wellness Center and the high school? You know, the, the.
The gully?
Depression, the gully, is that the ci- is that city property or school district?
That is city property.
City property.
Can't be used for anything, but it's city property. So the ravine that goes through there, because it does carry water from time to time, makes it challenging to do anything outside of what would be considered an outdoor space. So when we did the, the trail through there, it's why we had to put such a large culvert underneath the trail that goes back up to the high school because it carries. underneath the trail that goes back up to the high school because it carries a significant amount of water from the east as well. But, so we couldn't build anything per se there, but we could do, we've talked about outside, you know, like an outdoor arboretum type amphitheater, something like that. But all just kind of in passing more than anything.
Did note the some requests about getting Parks and Rec budget, and this may have been conversations, not just the report, and the request for Parks and Rec to have dedicated public works staff. And I, I know Eldon is good about trying to help. Parks and Rec requests whenever there is something like that. But I think we have a pretty good system now as it is. And, you know, unless our parks expand exponentially. I'm not sure that we can dedicate a person just working on parks, a public person. I mean, I like the flexibility that we have now, is what I'm saying.
I want to clarify, Tom, thank you. I don't think we were asking for dedicated park staff from Public Works. We were just pointing out that we don't have that in other departments. Other cities have that, and so it wasn't like a request. It was more of a sharing how we function.
Well, I think also in a detriment, it was listed as the staff doesn't report directly to Parks and Work Director. So, I did stumble over that a little bit, and I just thought, I, I agree with Tom. I feel like things are working the way they are because there's been, you guys have good communication, and there seems to be good attention to the needs of Parks and Rec from the city staff. But I did stumble over that as well.
Yeah, again, I think it's just, it's notified as a threat, I think, or a weakness, I think, is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
It doesn't necessarily mean, mean there has to be a change. It's just identified as, as a SWOT analysis. So, again, at no point in time have we ever talked about us being deprived of staff helping with anything that we needed to be done. It's just the, the structure that we have in place. We were just pointing that out.
And I think that was included when we did this originally, when I was on Parks and Rec. This original twenty-seventeen document came out of that timeframe. And I think what we have been spoiled by is the relationship that Matt and Nick had, that Matt and Eldon have. And so, just identifying it as a, if either of those two department heads turn over and that relationship doesn't continue, it, you know, it maybe could prove more difficult to get things taken care of in the parks than it does right now, was, was mostly the conversation that I recall, so.
Definitely culture of cooperation, and we'll hope it continues. Do we need to approve acceptance of this report or any actions since the discussion?
Yeah, this is an actual working document, so I would ask that the council, if they're willing, to approve the changes that have been suggested.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Scott moved.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
My second.
Mark, reach it. We'll give the staff then, okay? Move a second to move forward the Parks and Recreation Master Plan report as presented. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to ECOCOG, contract for zoning code review related to ADUs.
So, this was a mandate from the council back to planning and zoning to review the possibility of introducing code, code language as it relates to ADUs or accessory dwelling units. Given the delicate nature of this conversation, because there's a lot of things that go into it, cities can't regulate short-term rentals. And there's obviously fears about them turning into that scenario. There's also, you know, recommendations from the Housing Commission that there's, you know, the possibility of using these as housing for low to moderate income individuals. So, I think what planning and zoning is asking at this point to realize the complexity and the size of this potential change to bring ECOCOG in, not only to do the late work on, on writing a proposal for P and Z and the council to consider, but also work them through the process. And I would concur with their thoughts. This is not just going in and making a minor code adjustment. This is kind of a full-scale change that has fairly large ramifications moving forward. So, ECOCOG proposals not to exceed five thousand. And that mostly has to do with the fact that they'll probably have a few public hearings, a few public meetings that they'll facilitate.
So, did also come up through Housing Commission for the LMI?
Yeah, so the ADU concept was one of the things that the Housing Commission looked at as an alternative for just regular LMI-type housing units as a possibility. It's something that's going on in other larger communities, especially in Colorado and places like California. So, but again, there's, the state's taking away the city's ability to regulate the, the RBO and other units like that. So, there's, there's legitimate concern on both sides.
Move back a ways, but was there a component of looking at this also to include street-level residence apartments on back of downtown businesses? Or is that something totally different?
No, it was, we did look at that as well, but this would be, I mean, these would be, you know, potentially above garages, standalone facilities. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that you can go on an ADU route. And just trying to make sure that whatever we look forward for a recommendation makes sense in Mount Vernon.
With the rental component, my sense is that, I'm looking at law enforcement here, that the party houses, if you will. I haven't heard anything about that for a long time. Stephanie hasn't told me anything about any party houses lately, so it's all fixed. Is that issue a concern for law enforcement?
We've, we've had a couple. It depends on the year. This has been a fairly quiet year, but we've had, we've had a couple complaints. Met with, met with them, the officers did during a couple calls, and haven't had any issues since. So, nothing like we're, we used to years ago where they had many social groups occupying houses and using those for pledge parties and different things like that. So, hopefully that will continue to be nice and quiet.
Absentee landlords, absentee owners of these buildings, are that relatively?
Absentees seem to always be more difficult to address and to deal with, especially like disorderly house issues related to that, or even just keeping them engaged to maintain their properties, you know, for even zoning or nuisance issues.
I haven't heard of any for so long. Whatever's happening is good, I'd say. The boundary, keep it there. So, we've got a contract offer from ECOCOG on, so they package a recommendation to planning and zoning?
So, they'll work directly with planning and zoning, which is the commission that would normally work on this as well. But again, I think given the complexity, it would make sense to bring in an outside party to help them get through that process.
Whether it's a nuisance statement or something like this, there's values of a third party, yep. And I was reminded of this process today, oh, Parks and Rec are planning zoning, one more member too, so thanks for that reminder. What is the rule of the council on this ECOCOG contract?
Well, I think it's something that we've been talking about, you know, for quite some time, since I've been coming to meetings. And it sounds like we've come to an understanding. And I think with planning and zoning requesting the help, and quite frankly, it's a no-brainer to me. But, you know, if we want to move forward, I think going ECOCOG route is the proper way.
I think that is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rose. Move a second to move forward the ECOCOG contract for zoning review related to ADUs. No further discussion. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is emergency repairs to wall number seven.
So, this is just an FYI, do not get a vote right now, but obviously a fifty percent reduction in production at any well is cause for concern. In this instance, we believe that the cause is from a deteriorated pipe, and there's obviously holes in the pipe. Significant water loss when you're trying to pull from a well through a pressurized system. So, this is going to have to get replaced. I don't know the cost of it yet. I still don't know. It'll be one of those items that as soon as the cost comes forward, we'll just have to be prepared with it. But I wanted to at least give you the heads up that it was coming. The replacement should have a shelf life of twenty to twenty-five years, so it's not as if this is something that you would have to plan for ten, fifteen years from now.
Time frame for install?
As long as they've got galvanized pipe, install shouldn't take a significant amount of time. They're not drilling anymore, they're basically putting new pipe in, so.
Spring?
I, I would imagine it would actually happen here in the next month and a half.
And just so that it's out there, there's no danger to the water system, the other wells?
No, we have, we have multiple wells to pull from, but we have, we already have one well that we tend to leave offline given the water quality, and that's the one that we have to, to treat more when we, when we do pull from it. So, this is one of our best wells. This is the, the well that comes into, actually by Eldon's office, by Elliott Park. So, trying to keep it back online, or keep it online and going at capacity that it was before. It's not a water issue, it's components.
Council action is requested here, so anybody have proof of questions about the process? Rusty pipes are rusty pipes, they're rusty. Motion to move forward with this? I think Stephanie and Scott on that. Motion on the floor to move forward with emergency repairs to wall number seven of Bryant Park. All favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to reports, so the police department, Chief Shannon.
Just a couple things. Going over the report, we did have the opportunity to host the Boots and Badges Blood Drive at our facility, in our new garage. The training room was, they could have done it there as well, but they liked the space in the garage, a little bit cooler and a little bit more space. So, we were, we have had our first official event there. Also wanted to let council and haven't even told Chris or Lori yet, but found out today that the final walkthrough for the Lynn County Building Inspectors and the permits is scheduled for March fifteenth. So, hopefully, that's my first official date for now. As always, subject to change from there, but hopefully, hopefully we are getting very close. We are, we are duking one out right now that we're trying to figure out where it's at. Drywall or texture was applied today. Paint supervisor is showing up tomorrow, and we'll see what crew he brings with him. But they may be painting yet this week, so fingers are crossed and hoping for the best.
Doug, who won the Boots versus Badges Blood Drive?
Of course, the police department. We collected thirty-two units with, which will help one hundred and twenty-eight patients, to be precise.
Law enforcement, stepping up as usual. Any further questions with Chief Shannon? Otherwise, we move to Public Works. Mr. Downs. Photos as always, thank you. I'd be disappointed if you did send pictures.
And I like how you're rubbing off on Chris where he's including photos from the pipes too.
Oh, that's a whole of the pipe, okay.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to add was, so I don't know if you guys knew, but I did take my first vacation last week. And while I was gone, the guys did a great job, and they did actually finish the tree trimming. I think it was the southeast. I didn't even put it on here. Yeah, anyways, we had two quadrants to finish. Yeah, so we had two quadrants to finish, and they got that all done while I was gone, so. But other than that, I don't know. I know one other thing was on one of the lists that I left, before I left. When I left the guys, must have cleaned up Fourth Street. Kind of from Paul, from Second Avenue in front of Paul's house, about three blocks to the east or west. That road is just deteriorating so bad. It, yeah, and really bad in front of Paul's house right there. But I know Chris and I have talked about trying to put something together as far as a plan for some street replacement stuff this year. But I wanted to point that out. Those guys told me when they cleaned that up, it was, it was worse than it's ever been. We got loose debris floating around everywhere. It's, yeah, the curb and gutter's not, not good at all, and the, the actual street overlay was, is falling apart everywhere.
It'll be towards the top of your list on that money from the bond.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had to drive by that one up to the last meeting and confirmed.
Yeah. Yeah, and as much as I would like to do it ourselves, whatever time and effort we put into that to save any money is less time and effort we get to put towards anything else. So, it's the time, staff, money thing, so. There's not a doubt in my mind we could do it, but when do we do it and how do we get it done and still, still keep moving forward on everything else, so.
Few mild weeks of weather helped to get caught up in.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Of course, did I send you an email about whether FEMA help or maybe state help on the snowstorm that the governor considered a disaster and that there might be some possible aid? Or did, I mean, we probably didn't keep track of loads and labor and contract with, with Myers, and I think that, or is it pretty insignificant?
So, we responded that if, if they were getting close and needed additional dollars that we would calculate how much help that we gave the school, things like that. But, I mean, fortunately, unfortunately, it didn't tax our, our operation outside of the people for that two or three day period. But from a supply standpoint, it definitely wouldn't be worth trying to go through the FEMA paperwork again for the amount of money that we would potentially get. It just wasn't a big enough event that way.
That's fine, I accept your judgment on that. I just borrowed the email, it's. That's funny. Any else from Public Works, Eldon, or questions to Eldon? Moving to Parks and Rec, we already heard about long-term planning for the group. Any else to add?
Nothing else to add.
I've never seen the average patrons per day go down.
Yeah.
I think ever.
But.
If you had, divided by fewer days, probably would have.
Well, we were open. That one full day, we were closed all day, and then two. Well, we were open, that one full day, we were closed all day, and then two days we closed early.
So, I...
So, it didn't happen.
Planning and zoning, very clear report from Lee. Always interested to see how many new housings get built in a year, and there's a, actual number of permits. Building inspector was in town today, did an inspection on a new construction, a new bathroom in my basement, so they do follow up. Well, I'm glad I got a permit for that, that would have been embarrassing. Anything else to add? There any questions for Lee? Lot of report from Grace, and if I remember correctly, the issues with possible legislation in fact, impacting a relationship between libraries and city councils did not make the funnel date.
Correct.
So, um, I know Chris has a conversation with her previously, and I had a conversation with her in person, saying that it's not, not our intent to, to change the relationship that we already have with the library. And those law changes, we have to be, I mean, a law, but, um, we had, did not want to have a dog in that fight, and luckily it got dropped. Moving to discussion items, city council, health insurance.
Really, I think we could probably just, the information on the ADUs, you can join, the city's health insurance, we have to, obviously, pay for it. Anything beyond that, or discussion beyond contributions would require a lot of additional steps, because it would change the compensation as a council member, but I, I think the, the question that I received is, could it, as a council member, could you join the health insurance and pay for it? And the answer is yes. So, I would leave it up to individual council members. If they want to pursue that, then, um, they can meet with Lori and fill out the paperwork, and that would be the end of that.
Because all involvement we have, oh, all involvement we have. So, that's it for discussion reports. I may be first there. I'll mention that I've had several conversations, as has Chris, and with outside visits from the mayor of Fairfax, about, um, changing their, um, arrangement, their administration in Fairfax, including city manager, looking at the value of city manager. We had good conversations in person, um, had a couple of email conversations, and asked on what I could, and actually got invited to a Fairfax city council meeting last Tuesday with, uh, Eldon Miller from Ely, and, um, I'm not sure, yes, we're kind of smallish towns, but our, our comp, we're not very comfortable to Fairfax, is what I told them. I, I knew no other form of government other than the city manager, you go back to Mike, and go back to Mr. Sigens, and, and, you know, it's always been this form of, of, of city government, and, um, we have an LBC, we have a pool, we have a police force covering two towns, so, I'm not sure tax rates compare, span of control, um, you know, scope of services really compares to Fairfax, I mean, they've got different issues than we've got, but, spoke to their city council to questions, um, and moved on. I did note that they had a four-page agenda with 36 items on it, and the previous meeting lasted until 11:30, so, um, I, I'll put up with the two.
It might have been 218 pages or whatever.
I did regret sending that one out.
I had one of my report, I had two of my report, is dates. There was a cancellation of a meeting with Cornell and, um, school district administration, which would happen next Monday, that I got canceled. Something that did happen, that is scheduled, and I don't know, Chief and, and Lori and Andy talked about this, about recovery, planning with the emergency management group, um, and Heather, it's a trip of Flint, one of them was our employee, one of them, it's somebody with...
It's Tripp.
Tripp, okay. Heather Tripp, yeah. And I need to do some more research to see what we need to do to prepare for that, and I just forwarded to Lori, and you think you've got it on your calendar or whatever. There was a couple of attachments that I know I haven't opened yet, so, um, something that we need to prepare for is next Tuesday, I believe, and, um, Child Care Summit, April 19th, that's going to be at Cornell in the operating room, and this will be made to invite all councils, all school boards, and include Lisbon with that too, so, where we would technically need to post the meeting, and the, the posted meeting is, you know, meeting opens at 6:30 or whatever, approve the agenda, and then discussion, and then adjournment time. So, it's not a, a huge agenda, but I think we, as, and I'm assuming that we will have a forum. I mean, if Lisbon City Council doesn't have a forum, then they don't need to go through that process, but we need to open the meeting with our council opening a meeting, the school board may need to open the meeting per se to get their established minutes, uh, and then, and then it's discussion with, uh, Representative I Women's Foundation, probably some local representatives will talk, um, Craig is, I think, Ingle is doing some stuff on a survey, so it's, it's just information sharing so that everybody, I think this came out of the Cornell meetings, I think, with Greg and, and with Chris to say, and John Har, you know, some people know this, about this part, some people know this part, but, um, let's get ready with the same amount of information being presented this time. If you don't show, that's on you, but, uh, getting all the information out there. So, that's kind of a big deal on April 9th, um, at Cornell, and I, and I know Nathan's already got information going in in the paper about that. And I guess the last thing is the next, Thursday, I think it is, leading our voters is doing something on sustainability. It's a Wednesday or Thursday?
I think it's Wednesday.
Wednesday night, and, um, I think you had an email I got copied on, that if they want to talk about solar, residential solar, that I'd talk about that part, and we'll see what else the agenda is from there. That's my report. Anything from other council members or committees? Chris had sent his city administrators' report, what he's got coming up.
No, I think you said next week with the...
Yes, our, uh, time business kickoff meeting on, uh, February 27th, that's by 30 here.
Tuesday, Tuesday, yeah.
Good job with that postcard, Lori, I got mine.
I just sent them out, that was all JEO. I just mailed them.
Good day, you feel special.
That was a great idea.
They did great.
It was, yeah.
I'd be very interested to see what the participation is.
Same.
Let's see how many people are, who's there and who's not there, so.
Yes.
Well, do they see foods provided?
Yeah.
So, there we go.
More than cookies.
Be a few more people there.
But Joe Jonathan said, just always have food and more.
That's right.
So, any other committee report, anything to report on? Anything else that needs to come before onslaught this time? Otherwise, I would say we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for a good meeting.
Here you go.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.